When Peter Frampton came to the Civic Center in Del Mar, he came out and said hello, Del Mar.
No, he didn't.
Yes, he did.
Well, when George Jones was performing in the Civic Center, he said, "It's great to be in Reading, Pennsylvania." He forgot what county it was in.
Welcome to the May 9th legislative session. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to everyone that's here, and I would ask that if you have a cellphone or a pager, please turn it off. If you need to take a phone call, please exit the room and take it in the hallway. Should an emergency arise during the meeting, there are two exits. You can leave the room, make a left and a right, and go down the stairs. Should that exit be blocked, you can exit, make a right, and go down the stairs. If you need assistance, please let us know, and we'll get someone to help you. Thank you. At this time, I would invite Reverend Teresa Langdon of Faith Evangelical Lutheran Church to lead us in the invocation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let us pray. Creator God, bestow on this gathering your peace and blessings. We sit amidst the abundance of your creation, including the coming together of diverse peoples and dreams, and the many gifts and talents of all the people of Salisbury, and of all these leaders who have answered the call to serve. Encourage and guide those gathered here to use these gifts for the common good, and for the betterment of all in this time and place and into time yet to come. Bring your wisdom to bear on the business undertaken in this chamber. As it is written in the Book of Proverbs, "By wisdom a house is built, and through understanding it is established; through knowledge its rooms are filled with rare and beautiful treasures." And from the book of Matthew, "A city built on a hill cannot be hid. No one lights a lamp and puts it under a bowl; instead he puts it on a lampstand where it gives light for everyone in the house." In the same way, your light must shine before people. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Langdon. Please join me now in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have several presentations this evening. The first is the Maryland Department of Commerce, and Ms. Mindy Burgoyne. Mindy, come on up, please.
Yes, I'm Mindy Burgoyne with the Maryland Department of Commerce. I want to thank Councilwoman Mitchell for inviting me here to tell you what we do and why I'm here in Salisbury. So I work for, as I, the Maryland Department of Commerce is an actual department with a cabinet secretary that reports to the governor, and we have field offices in different localities. So there is a field office here on the Lower Shore, and I run that. So my job is to do outreach on behalf of the department in the locality. So everything that we do, which is, you know, business attraction, business development, assisting local governments with economic development issues, visiting businesses, anything that would involve economic development assistance, international trade, certain industry sector specifics, my job is to do outreach in the area and then connect people that need it with resources for economic development. So we work very closely with Laura Kertikowsky, as well as Dave Ryan, and other service-providing partners that do the same thing. I'm also able to fast-track communication, so if there's kind of a quagmire, somebody enters and trying to get answers from the state or the federal government about a business issue or an economic development issue, my job would be to be able to step in and say, "Let's cut the red tape and get you the answer that you need." And that's pretty much it. I'm here all the time, and I do want to tell you that our goal, the secretary has set a goal for us, to see 200 companies in our region this year. So I cover Worcester Way Comico and Somerset, and certainly Salisbury is at least 50 percent of my region. So that'd be 100, 140 companies I expect to go and visit this year, just to see if there's anything that we can do to help. Naturally, when a company or a local government has an issue and they call, we're there. But we're supposed to do way more than that. We're supposed to go out and see and uncover needs and try to sort of match needs with resources, whether it's us, or it's the feds, or it's the local people, kind of a connector.
Great. Can you give us a number where you can be reached if someone has a question?
Yes, my number is 410-718-0094.
Any comments? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
We appreciate what you do for us.
Thanks.
At this time, I'd like to invite Sergeant Hitty to the podium from the Salisbury Police Department.
How's everyone doing tonight? Sergeant Hitty with Salisbury PD. This year, we are running the 2016 Maryland Torch Run campaign. Maryland Torch Run is composed of state, federal, and local law enforcement agencies. They come together every March, and we continue on through June, where we advertise shirts and hats in an effort to raise money for the Maryland Special Olympics. All this money goes straight to the Maryland Special Olympic participants. There is no money that stays in-house. Last year, the Maryland State raised about $2.3 million for this program through the efforts of all these law enforcement agencies. We like to continue on with our assistance in this program. This year, the shirts are gray. They look great. I know a lot of people are really impressed with the way the shirts look. They've been going great. One of the events that we're doing is going to be the 5K Run. It's the actual torch run. It's going to be held on June 6th at 1:00. We are going to be leaving Salisbury University, and we are going to be ending up at Salisbury Police Department. Another event that we're going to be holding is this upcoming Saturday. It's going to be referred to as Cops on Rooftops, where you're going to have uniformed Salisbury officers standing on the top of a partnered Chick-fil-A, who has graciously opened their facility to us. We are going to be selling these shirts for the entirety of the day, so I encourage everyone to come out, enjoy. The shirts are selling for $15. We have hats on hand. They're going quick. They're $10. So we would appreciate all the support that we can get.
Can they purchase the shirts at the headquarters, or?
They can come into Salisbury Police Department, ask for me, Sergeant Hitty. I'll be there. Also Detective Caputo is assisting. Officer Hudson and Officer Damari are also participating in the program, too, so they can assist at that time, too.
Great, great program.
My Bellas has them downtown as well.
My Bellas has opened their doors and allowed us to sell the shirts in the downtown Plaza area.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, we have a proclamation and a couple of recognition awards.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, ladies and gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening.
We do have a couple of proclamations and some presentations to make tonight, and I'm going to ask a couple people over the period of these presentations to come up and join me. This first presentation recognizes a really fantastic program, and then those following are part and parcel of this presentation. That was brought to our city thanks to the Weaver family and the organization We Heart SBY. So let me read this proclamation, then I'm going to have Derek and Katie come join me. Whereas We Heart SBY is a nonprofit community organization under the leadership of Executive Director Derek Weaver, with its mission to cultivate love for Salisbury and engage strategic efforts which enable the city to thrive. And whereas We Heart SBY held its inaugural awards banquet on February 18th, 2016, to announce and celebrate the individuals, businesses, and organizations whose efforts have helped the city thrive. And whereas We Heart SBY presented one award each in 10 categories after results of an online poll opened to all members of the community and were tabulated, and one of the three nominees selected by the organization's Board of Directors was declared the winner in that category. And whereas We Heart SBY 2016 winners will be recognized this evening, and We Heart SBY has pledged to make this awards banquet an annual event, thereby sustaining the positive energy which fuels and expands the belief of goodness in our community. Now therefore, I, Jacob Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim May 9th, 2016, as We Heart SBY Day in our city, in appreciation of and with gratitude for the community spirit and generosity of all those associated with this organization, which promotes and celebrates all that is good about the Salisbury community. Derek and Katie, would you come forward so that I can give you this proclamation? Do you all stay up here and help me with this? Okay, all right. Yeah. So, and this is in no particular order, just the order in which they're stacked, but these are all fantastic organizations. And if you weren't there the night that they were awarded, and people, if you weren't there the night that they were awarded, you know, I think you missed out on a moment when not government, you know, not even the business community, but just people were doing and recognized for amazing things that they do in our community. So first, I'd like to invite representatives of Hope, Help, and Outreach Point of Entry Incorporated to come forward, which works with the homeless in the Salisbury area. You know, Donna, I think we're all just impressed and honored to have an organization like yours in our community. So for receiving the 2016 nonprofit award from We Heart SBY at the first annual awards banquet, held to celebrate individuals, businesses, and organizations whose efforts have enabled the city to thrive. So in witness thereof, here we go. I'm going to present this to you with Derek and Katie here as well, and Chris, if you wouldn't mind. Would you hang out right here so we can get everybody up after we take a picture? All right. Next, I'd like to invite forth for receiving the 2016 Performing Artist Award, the community players of Salisbury, a local community theater group. Are you representative of community players? Okay, I'm going to hand that to you.
I can do it on the bench.
All right, excellent, wonderful. There's nothing better than getting an award you weren't anticipating, right? Beautiful. And would you, would you stay, yeah, for the picture? Stephen DeCarlo, owner of SMDI Photography, for receiving the 2016 Visual Artist Award. Stephen, I don't see Stephen, but I'm going to hand that to you. For receiving the 2016 Green Award, pastor of Community of Joy Church as a brethren and founder of the Camden Community Garden, Martin Hutchison. For receiving the 2016 Innovator Award, editor and founder of the Salisbury Independent Newspaper, Greg Bassett, I don't see Greg here either. I'll hand that to you. For receiving the 2016 Coolest Cop Award, and you'll never let your colleagues forget it, Officer Aaron Bull Hudson.
That's why you're so cool.
Yeah, humility. For receiving the 2016 Public Servant Award, City of Salisbury Parking Enforcement Officer Dee Kelly.
Three more.
For receiving the 2016 Import Award, and this was an award for somebody who was, as we frequently say, a come here, you know? I think that's the term, but I like import award. Executive Director of the Wycomico Public Library, Andrea Bursler, and we sure are glad you came here. For receiving the 2016 Unsung Hero Award, now we're singing about her, City of Salisbury Third Friday Volunteer Julie Messing. Who doesn't have a cast on? And I know he's not here tonight, but I've seen him three times today. So for receiving the 2016 We Heart SBY Award, the founder of Bike SBY, Matt Drew. And can we get all of the award winners back here for a picture with counsel? Chris, come on.
Move the chairs.
Come on down. Come on down.
Four more.
We probably just blew the sound check for Keith.
And this is the part where everybody leaves.
Martin's going to stay.
Martin's going to stay. Just because he feels that.
Thank you.
All right. So the next thing that we have on our agenda is, I think, an important and highly relevant conversation. This week is Drinking Water Week for 2016. And so I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy, and whereas any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth and diversity, productivity and public safety are in some way related to access to safe water, and whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend, and whereas each citizen in our city is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water, now therefore, I, Jacob Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim May 8th through 14th, 2016, as Drinking Water Week in our city, and encourage all citizens to visit the City of Salisbury website, to know the quality of Salisbury's water, and to also help in providing your families with clean, help us in providing your families with clean, quality water by participating in official City of Salisbury water sampling programs. And this seems like an appropriate time to note that we just got this cool thing, which is first place for the second year in a row of the Maryland Rural Water Associations toasting the tap water tasting competition for Maryland's best drinking water. The second year in a row that that's happened, and the second time the city's gotten it two years in a row. So you want to talk about clean water, this is the place to get it. And that's Salisbury Drinking Water, and you're a little harassed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Should we toast though?
We could toast that. I'll entertain a motion now to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved. Second.
So, Ms. Mitchell and Ms. Jackson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Good evening, Ms. Nichols.
On the consent agenda this evening, we have the March 21st closed session minutes, the March 28th council meeting minutes, April 11th council meeting minutes, April 18th work session minutes, and April 19th budget session minutes. Resolution number 2631 authorizing the mayor to sign the grant agreement and accept a grant of $32,000 from the Maryland Department of Transportation Maryland Bike Way Program for the design of a bike route on West Main Street, Fitzwater Street, and Parsons Road. And resolution number 2632, accepting grant funds awarded through the Maryland Department of Natural Resources from the Clean Vessel Act Program, Waterway Improvement Fund, in the amount of $9,685 for a replacement sewage pump-out facility at the Port of Salisbury Marina. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
Thank you.
If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Mitchell and Mr. Bodo. Good evening.
Good evening. Only one item this evening, and it's a request for a declaration of surplus. The City of Salisbury has acquired an additional property via donation, 324 Poplar Hill Avenue. Pursuant to Chapter 2.36 of the Salisbury Maryland Code of Ordinances, city-owned real property such as this must first be deemed surplus by the Director of Procurement, then make a recommendation to City Council as to the sale or disposition of such real property. If approved by Council, the Director of Procurement will invite proposals for development or prepare an advertisement for auction sale. There is also the option of listing the property with the Realtor, with the contingency noting that these additional actions will be done as well. Council will then have the final say as to the acceptance or rejection of offers received before anything is finalized. It's my understanding that the administration does not wish, excuse me, does not wish to retain this property, and believes its sale would encourage residential and economic development. Given this need to serve the best interest of the City of Salisbury, it's my recommendation that this property is deemed surplus and to request Council's approval to declare it surplus.
Any questions? I'll call the motion. Will those in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. This evening, we have a public hearing on mayor's proposed fiscal year '17 budget, water and sewer rates, and constant yield tax rate. At this time, I will ask anyone who would like to testify in the audience to please stand and be sworn.
Hi. If you'll raise your hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give was the true, the whole truth and everything? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tillman?
The ordinance is ordinance number 2385, an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the City of Salisbury, Maryland for the period July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017, establishing the levy for the general fund for the same fiscal period, and establishing the appropriation for the water and sewer, parking authority, city marina, and stormwater funds. Be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the amounts listed in Schedule A operating budget appropriations are hereby appropriated for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, and ending June 30, 2017, to fund operations of the City of Salisbury, Maryland. Be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the amounts listed in Schedule B capital project appropriations are hereby appropriated for capital projects. Be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the amounts listed in Schedule C anticipated grant expenditures are hereby appropriated for the grants listed, and the mayor is authorized to enter into any necessary agreements or memorandum in order to receive and expend these funds. And be it further ordained that the tax levy be in the same as hereby set at .9432 per $100 of assessed valuation of all real property, and at $2.21 per $100 of assessed valuation for all personal property subject to taxation by the City of Salisbury for general fund purposes, excuse me, including debt service purposes, exclusive of revenues derived from the Water and Sewer Fund for debt service purposes attributed to water and sewer activities, and two, all taxes levied by this ordinance shall be liens from and after July 1, 2016, and shall be due and payable as specified in Title 14 of the Tax Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland as amended. Number three, that all fees adopted by this ordinance and all other fees currently in effect shall remain so unless changed at a future date by the City of Salisbury, excuse me, by the Salisbury City Council. And be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that a public hearing on the proposed budget ordinance will be held 6:05 PM on May 9, 2016, in Room 301 of the Salisbury City County Government Office Building, 125 North Division Street, Salisbury, Maryland. Be it further ordained by the Salisbury City Council that this ordinance shall take effect upon final passage. And the schedules A and B, as described, are attached. I think I read it all last time, and if that was good enough, I'm happy to let it lie.
Yeah, that's fine. At this time, I will now open the public hearing on ordinance number 2385, ordinance number 2386, and the constant yield tax rate. We have two people who would like to speak. Mr. George Roach, you're up first.
My name is George Roach, and I'm here as my capacity as president of the Salisbury Area Property Owners Association. Let me begin by saying that the rental property owners and managers of Salisbury appreciate the opportunity to work with the city on a level playing field and without being demonized and vilified, as we all probably all remember all too well used to be the case. And it was in that spirit that when I passed on to my membership, the mayor had advised me in a meeting we had several weeks ago that there would be a fee increase coming. I specifically told him that it was a point of information, not to be sensationalized at the expense of a mutually beneficial working relationship. And after the mayor also addressed the issue before SPOA, my membership, rightly or wrongly, took it for granted this would be a modest, moderate, and in the interest of working with the mayor, again, we had to choose not to make a note of it. So I hope you understand the property owner's alarm, when we only recently learned this would be a 100% increase, and quite an increase in the cost of doing business for a large property owner. I mean, there are 8,369 registered properties and 1,150 licensed landlords, fees that had generated $375,000 in revenues, and a couple of years ago, were to generate over three-quarters of a million dollars just for registering properties. We blame no one for the timing of the disclosure of this information, and the numbers are the numbers in terms of your expense to revenue analysis of rental registration operations. We understand that running a government comes at a price, and we want to pay our share. And it's in the same spirit of the expense of a mutually beneficial working relationship. And after the mayor also addressed the issue before Sapoa, my membership rightly or wrongly took it for granted this would be a modest moderate, and in the interest of working with the mayor, again, we destined choose not to make a note of it. So I hope you understand the property owner's alarm when we only recently learned this would be a 100% increase, and quite an increase in the cost of doing business for a large property owner. I mean, there are 8,369 registered properties and 1,150 licensed landlords, fees that had generated $375,000 in revenues, and a couple of years ago, or perhaps those to generate over three quarters of a million dollars just for registering properties. We blame no one for the timing of the disclosure of this information, and the numbers are the numbers in terms of your expense to revenue analysis of rental registration operations. We understand running a government comes at a price, and we want to pay our share. And it's in the same spirit of collegiality that we come now to share our concerns and ask that you consider some form of compromise or alternative or relief from such a huge increase all at once. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Next, we have Mr. Richard Inslee.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Couple points I'd like to make here. As you've heard Mr. Roach say, this is a 100% increase in the cost of these fees, and I don't know of any other portion of the budget that has a 100% increase. That's a dramatic increase. The history of landlord or rental property owner registration and licensing goes back to Barry Tillman's administration, and when it was proposed, we were told that the main purpose was the city needed a database of registration, and it was not a revenue generating, not a revenue generating legislation, but merely a $5 or $10 fee to cover the cost of implementing it. You can see where that's gone. It's a question in somebody's mind, or there should be, as to who really pays for this. And the presumption is the landlord pays for it, but the landlord's not really the one who is paying for that. They're a pass-through. It's the customer, it's the tenants who are paying for this. Just as Comcast is not the one who is paying the Comcast franchise fee, if you look at your Comcast bill, you'll see clearly delineated there is a $10, I believe, or whatever it is, franchise fee. It's passed along. And this fee, these fees, are no different. When I make my budget every year, I look at what my costs and my expenses are, and that's how I set my rents. So when the costs and the expenses go up, the rents go up. And I submit to you that these fees, these costs, are being borne by the segment of our population, renters, who can least afford it. So I would just ask that you give this another look and give it some more consideration. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Inslee. Are there any other people who would like to comment? Hearing none, I will now close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2387 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Boda, the second by Ms. Jackson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
I was so quickly ready to vote, Mr. President, after those tumultuous years that the industry had.
Oh, the six, I did, okay, got it. I apologize. Yes, we have three, I'm sorry, we have three seconds.
Our haste to get it done. That helps out them.
Ordinance number 2386 previously.
We'll close the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
And now I need a motion to approve motion 2385, correct?
Yes.
Yes. And motion number 2386, and the constant yield?
You're gonna do a whole time?
This is the first time. Now, we'll take ordinance number 2385 first.
They've already been read one time. The first reading, this is just a public hearing.
You don't need a motion.
They'll be read again next time.
They'll be read next time and approved.
Thank you. I think I have it now.
238.
Correct. We need 2386, according to Mr. Tillman.
Wait a minute. We've already done first reading of the budget, so this would be second reading and we voted on this, correct?
No, no second reading. Second reading is scheduled for the 23rd.
Right.
Just a public hearing.
Just a public hearing.
It's just a public hearing, not a vote.
Right. Public hearing, public hearing on 2385, and now public hearing on 2386.
Thank you. Not a vote.
So we have to have an individual. I already announced it.
Okay.
If you can do the public hearing, if it's a public hearing, it'll be up.
So each one has to individually have its own public?
We would ask if there's any input from the audience with regard to ordinance number 2386 setting the rates for the water and sewer.
Okay, I thought it was for all three.
Yeah.
My mistake.
That's what I thought it was, too.
So I did it the way you thought.
Well, but we didn't read each one of them so that people could come up.
Gotcha. All right, so let's reopen the public hearing.
Okay.
Please read the next one.
Yes, 2386, and it's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland to amend water and sewer rates to decrease sewer-only rates and making said, excuse me, changes effective for all bills dated October 1, 2016, and thereafter, unless and until subsequently revised or changed. Whereas the water and sewer rates must be revised in accordance with the proposed fiscal year 2017 budget of the City of Salisbury and the appropriations thereby made, and established for the purposes of the water and sewer departments, now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the council of the City of Salisbury that the following water and sewer rates shall be adopted by the City of Salisbury. And then the schedules, which I read in the last presentation, are set forth as A schedules 1 through 8, and then B sets forth the definitions. And they're all here in the packet. I will not read them again tonight, so.
Could I see you for a second? Okay. For clarification purposes. We incorrectly voted on ordinance number 2385, and I'd like to have everyone consider rescinding.
Mr. President, if I may, what you said was, you spoke into the record 2387.
Right, that's what I did.
As long as everyone knew it, they're moving on.
Okay, so we're okay.
Because you closed everything.
You're okay?
I'm good.
Yeah, I had under the impression we had moved on, but I did it with gusto.
I saw your gusto.
I saw my gusto there.
I appreciate your gusto. All right, so we did 2387, so we have nots, now we just need to open the hearing for any comments relative to the water and sewer rates.
Right.
Okay, we've got it under control. Anyone that is, would like to speak? Is there anyone who didn't sign up that would like to speak on the water and sewer Okay, then we'll go to the last, the last item, which is the constant yield tax rate. Okay, there are no separate materials?
No. No separate thing? I thought it was in the, you read something in the first ordinance, it was encompassed.
The budget ordinance?
Yes.
The rate was addressed in the first ordinance.
Gotcha.
Apparently, there's nothing left for us to do.
Is there any, well, that's what I thought originally.
Bye.
All right.
Mr. Tillman needs to read the first reading, needs to present the first reading for 2387.
Yeah, nothing has been read of 2387, so just for the record, that's the only thing we have.
Okay. So I have to close the public meeting again. The public meeting is now closed.
Okay. Here, the meeting's still open.
Hearing, Ms. Tillman. Go ahead, Mr. Tillman.
Ordinance 2387, which we've heard that number earlier, is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2016 general fund budget to appropriate funding to transfer to capital projects and funds to be used for the demolition and curbing required for the fire station number two. This was the obligation of the city in receiving the land and trade, the agreement was that the city would demolish the existing fire station and basically return the property to a lot, and curb it as necessary. Whereas the fire department has a need for $33,920 to complete demolition of the old fire station, and whereas the fire department has a need for $20,000 to complete sidewalk work connected with fire station two, and whereas the funds used for the above improvements must be from city funds and not from tax-exempt bond proceeds, and whereas there is no available city funds, not from bond proceeds, and the general capital projects fund available for the demolition and curbing improvements, and whereas there is not an appropriation of the general fund supporting the transfer of funds from the general fund to the general capital projects fund, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury that the city's fiscal year 2016 general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows when the increase in the current year available 01000-469810 by $53,920, and an increase in the transfers general capital project fund 91001-599109 by an equivalent amount.
And we voted on that already?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, any closing comments?
Just, I think, for a point of clarification on this, and we did everything we could to not have to bring this to you. And you already voted on this one?
Yeah.
Okay, but I think it's worth noting, we did everything we could, but because the property ends back up in private hands, you know, it was our desire, again, to address it with bonds that had already been passed, associated with, years ago, old bonds associated with this project, we simply couldn't, because our bond council advised us that the land would go back into private hands, so it was inappropriate, so we needed to do a budget amendment. So that's the only comment I had with respect to this. Other than that, nothing else, Mr. President.
Thank you for the clarification. I would like to apologize to everyone for the confusion. This is my first public hearing of budget, so I will do better, I will do better next time.
By the time, I thought I knew what I was doing too, until I finished, and then I was totally confused.
But having said that. Public comments? Hearing none? We are adjourned.
That was fine.